For those here in person and also for those watching us live streaming, and also those attending in person at the Avalon School in Catalina. For today's meeting, we are including both sides of the water. So I will now ask our board secretary to take rule and establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead. Member Benitez.
Here.
Member Lopez.
Present.
Member Otto.
Here.
Student member Arroyo.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the -- oh. Did I skip right over the pledge? Holy cow. Let me take a moment. I will ask our student representative from McBride, Mr. Mark Medina, to lead us in the pledge.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to approve the expulsion of student number 201134135. On item 3.2, the board voted 4-0 with Mr. Otto absent to demote classified employee number 00541054. And now we are at the adoption of the agenda. And we need a motion.
What happens if I don't do one because we haven't adopted bylaws yet, President Craighead?
I would ask somebody else to make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just trying to highlight the importance of this board adopting bylaws with procedures of governance.
Thank you. I will have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez.
Aye.
Member Otto.
Aye.
President Craighead.
Aye.
Member Benitez.
Aye.
Student member Arroyo, preferential vote.
Aye.
That passes 4-0.
Thank you. And now we are at introduction of our student representative. So I will ask Mr. Mark Medina from McBride to come to the podium.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Medina. This is our school mascot, Wolfie. As I said, good evening. My name is Mark Medina. I am a senior at McBride High School in the Criminal Justice and Investigation Pathway at McBride and a dual enrollment student at Long Beach City College since ninth grade. I plan to receive my AS degree this summer to transfer to Loyola Marymount University in the fall of 2025. As the president of ASB at McBride, I'm very honored to have the opportunity to speak here today. I want to thank everyone here and watching. I'd also like to thank Ms. Browning, my ASB teacher, Dr. Dunn, our school principal, all the booster clubs at McBride that support our pathways, and all the staff, teachers, and students at McBride, as well as my family for all their support. I want to begin by talking about my plans and experience in ASB this year. As the ASB president, it's been my responsibility to plan events, make decisions, encourage school spirit, and promote inclusivity. Currently in ASB, we decided to create a new commission known as freshman activities to promote school spirit and make McBride more welcoming for freshmen. For example, just the last two weeks, we've set up lunchtime badminton games exclusively for freshmen to meet other students and encourage inclusivity. Another upcoming event at McBride this Friday is Snowfall Fest. Snowfall Fest is a fun way for students at McBride to participate in activities and a way for clubs to fundraise by selling food or items related to their club. As president, I work very closely with pathway ambassadors at McBride and meet with their class every Thursday to exchange information. Pathway ambassadors is a class at McBride that works on our school pathway events and activities and oftentimes collaborates with ASB to host school events. Just last month, ASB Pathway Ambassadors, our school pathway coordinator, Ms. Ray, and the Skills USA Club planned a career day. Career Day is a day for freshmen and sophomores to meet and hear from a variety of professionals about their occupations, such as lawyers, police, doctors, and engineers, while juniors and seniors attended college and financial aid workshops. Our school college advisor, Mr. Lee, was able to bring in college advisors, financial aid advisors, and college alumni to help students with their college planning. Currently, Pathway ambassadors and ASB are working on Pathway Games, which is an event at our school where students from different pathways will compete in games and the pathway that earns the most points will be awarded a trophy and bragging rights. Ultimately, Pathway Games is a way for students to make new friends and show our school spirit. Now, as a CGI student, my forensics class has been able to participate in many labs related to the CGI pathway. Most recently, my class was able to do a pig dissection where I had to identify all the pig's organs and create an autopsy report. As a CGI student, I'm also the treasurer of the mock trial club at McBride. In mock trial, we assign roles such as witnesses, lawyers, journalists, artists, timekeepers, and bailiffs. With the help of my law teacher, Ms. Jones, and our attorney coach, Mr. Razzo, we are able to receive help and correction from industry professionals. Just last month, we participated in the California Mock Trial Competition at the Los Angeles Courthouse in which both of our teams won the case verdict. A new thing that McBride has started is our 12th grade advanced forensics class having the ability to be counted as college credit if we pass the Long Beach City College exam correlated with the class. In the health and medical pathway, they have recently received their high school Centers for Disease Control Certification as well as Stop the Bleed certifications run by Memorial Care. The Health and Medical Pathway is currently working on their National Federation of State High School Associations certifications, which includes getting CPR certified as well as learning how to handle skin diseases and ACL tears. The 11th and 12th grade Health and Medical classes will also be going to the Inuit Dome to meet with sports medicine specialists. This year, McBride's Engineering Pathway has completed their Solid Works Certification, a 3D and designing program, as well as incorporate an ACE mentorship program that offers students scholarships and field trips to professional architect offices and construction sites. They have also been working on projects. Most recently, they had to build a model student union building on a college campus and compete against other schools. Overall, McBride is a great place with good academics and the highest graduation rate in Long Beach Unified and with a great community of students and staff, promotes inclusivity, and takes pride in our school and our accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And we usually don't have mascots, especially really, really tall ones with potentially sharp teeth in the boardroom. But outside of Wolfie, is there somebody else that's here to -- that you would like to acknowledge?
I'd really like to thank my family, our school principal, Ms. Browning. They -- without them, I mean, without their support, this would not be possible. I mean, they've always shown support. I've been in ASB for three years now. I've always enjoyed the class. Ms. Browning's been a big help and she's always there to help and support the class. And Dr. Dunn as well. She's our new principal. She's doing a great job. I love the class.
That's nice to hear. That's nice to hear. Do we have any other questions?
What are the plans after graduating from high school?
I just got accepted into Loyola Marymount University. That's my dream college. So I'm happy to be attending there next in the fall of 2025. I will be studying political science. I'm excited about it.
Well, we are very proud of you and we know you'll do well.
Thank you.
So I think we're going to take a picture.
Okay.
So I'll have -- bring Wolfie. This is a unique situation for us. And we have our vision in action.
And I'm a teacher on special assignment in the Early and Expanding Learning Opportunities Program. The RAP program is a free after-school program that our district offers to support our families and our students. My biggest hope for that kids go to the RAP program is that they have that safe and secure space to come to after school. A lot of our parents work full-time and can't come get their kids right at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock. So my hope is that when they're here, they are introduced to activities that they may not be introduced to without our program. So I have an eight-year-old daughter who is in the after-school program and it has been an amazing experience for her. She goes to an environment where she is accepted, loved, and the activities that she comes home with are sometimes things that I never would have thought of. They do STEM activities, science, art, literature. She's getting that experience plus getting to socialize with her peers. If you are wondering if you should enroll your child in the after-school program, do it. Even if it's not just for you having that safe space for them to go, it's all of the opportunities of things that they get. And we also offer over Thanksgiving, winter, spring, and summer break.
It's always good to see what we're doing throughout the district.
And with the 1970s background music, Mr. Itzen. Love it.
Listen, that was a good era. Okay. Next up, we have our public comment. So I will look towards our board secretary to let us know if we have speakers for items on the agenda.
Yes, we have one. Jerry Morrison. Can you come to the podium?
Good evening, Mrs. Craighead, colleagues. My name is Jerry Morrison. I'm the president of the Teachers Association of Long Beach. And as well as teachers, of course, our union represents librarians, counselors, nurses, speech-language pathologists, psychologists. All of these people bring expertise and a great wealth of experience to their jobs. And when you look at our proposals for bargaining, which is the agenda item I'm speaking to tonight, you will see that the main thrust of these proposals is to allow our members to put that expertise into good use in the schools. We want teachers to spend most of their time teaching. We want counselors to spend most of their time meeting with students and parents, not being glorified hall monitors or playground assistants. We have to get away from the notion that our jobs all come with an attachment that says and other duties as a side. So I think that when you read the proposal, you will see, these are not going to break the bank. They are reasonable proposals. We know we are entering into uncertain times, not least of all financially. We know we have less kids each year in the schools. And we know that has consequences for financing. We've heard that there might be layoffs, that teachers might be losing their jobs. Many of us went through that about 15 years ago and we never want to go through it again. So we hope that we can work with the district to make sure that doesn't happen. And we're going to propose ways that we think if layoffs have to happen, we can make sure it's not our young teachers who are being laid off. We think it would make sense to incentivize some of our older teachers to take early retirement instead. You have the money to do that. We have hundreds of millions of dollars in reserves. This school district's reserve is legendary. People speak about it in like odd tones. They can't believe how much money Long Beach has. Maybe we should use some of that money to incentivize people to retire because none of us want to see young teachers with young families, mortgages, commitments, losing their jobs. So we begin negotiating in January. We're going to meet you in good faith. And we hope we can have a successful negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our only speaker for items on the agenda.
Correct. Yeah. And we have four speakers off the agenda. We'll start with Nubia, if you'll come to the podium.
Good evening, board members. My name is Nubia Flores. I am an LBUSD parent and one of the parents that is part of the Equity Leadership Team and that alongside others helped to write the Excellence in Equity Policy. I'm here this evening with a couple of asks. First, I'm going to ask you all to remember how this equity policy that is anchoring your work came to be. I'm going to ask you to remember the 200-plus parents and community members that filled this room calling for LBUSD to take action to address systemic racism and discrimination that has long harmed Black students in our public schools. If you were not here during that time, I ask you to go back and watch those school board meetings. It was during that time that LBUSD had a call out to the community and asked folks interested in helping to write the policy to apply to join the ELT. Over 200 people applied. The selected ELT was made up of 40 parents, community stakeholders, and LBUSD staff. For about two years, we met regularly and had difficult conversations. Lots of knowledge and lived experiences shared, lots of painful truths shared. It was not easy. Took about two years to write. It was presented to you and four of you voted to approve it. I ask you to continue to remember how this policy came to be and use all the work and effort that came from us to inform how you continue to move forward and uphold the policy and how you foster public conversations and community engagement. We're about to hit three years since you adopted this policy and lots of good work has come from it. You adopted board goals that center our Black students. You passed a grading policy that helps to make grading more equitable and accessible. And you share the data that we asked for specifically in the equity policy. If you don't know where students are at, we can't make real change to help them succeed. So in closing, here are the rest of my asks. I ask you to place on your agenda an update of the work that has been accomplished and anchored in the equity policy. You could also add a language access update, a communications audit specific to community engagement, a presentation on the state of special education in LBUSD if you are looking to add things to your agenda. All these things affect student outcomes and also are included in the equity policy. With so much work to do, I don't understand your light agendas and 30-minute meetings. I ask you to reaffirm your commitment and support of the policy. As I mentioned earlier, you had a board member vote no on the equity policy and another board member vote no on your vision and values 2035 that anchors your strategic plan, but have never really shared an explanation for those no votes. And lastly, I'm going to ask you to be mindful of how you have conversations publicly. Check your biases, your privilege, and your ableism. The intention of the policy was to center our Black students and help our most underserved and underrepresented students. I ask you to remember that.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michael.
What's up, everybody? Hello. I'm Michael Gray. I'm the care center counselor and also a CTE health science teacher at Poly High School. I'm here as a member of the Equity Team that wrote the district equity policy. Parents and community members have always been the real writers and heartbeats of what is contained in this policy. This is for real, for real, a family and community policy more than a district policy. Part of my purpose as a district employee is to daily work to carry out this policy on behalf of our students and parents and our staff members. We do not rise -- I have a quote. We do not rise to the level of our goals and policies. We fall to the level of our daily habits, practices, and systems. That's from Atomic Habits. James cleared. So what I'd like to focus on is that the aspirations and goals of our equity policy are just and long overdue. However, the daily what to do to get there needs to have space to happen. My students, who are peer mentors, have stated that our teachers, who are actively working to bring the equity policy to life in their classrooms, need help. And the help that is needed is peer-to-peer. The help that is required is that all of our students need emotional intelligence and mental, physical health skill building. The help that is needed is collectively lifting each other up while individually gaining these skills. These must be prioritized and incentivized. It's not more on the plate. You've been to the barbecue where the plate, you can't put nothing on it? This, that's no fun. I want all the stuff on it. So I need to build the plate. These skills we're talking about is building the plate, not more on the plate. Because the reality is many, many, many of our students have experienced trauma in all of its forms, including, as Dr. Brené Brown acknowledges, racism, poverty, heterosexism, ableism. They're all traumas. And many of our students and their parents have experienced trauma at their schools and in their classrooms. The reality is this trauma increases health and learning challenges. No, no one is less capable than anyone. However, the challenges are real. So the skills that I'm speaking of, they actually prepare people to be powerful. And powerful people make powerful decisions. And these powerful decisions are what create powerful communities. And I'd like to end with this. Dr. Chris Amden, Ratchedemic, if you ever read his book. Ratchedemic is a ratchet book. It's really good. But Dr. Chris Amden states, "We must move from courageous conversations to brave behaviors." Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa.
This is what community looks like. This is what community looks like. I'm reminded of that chant that we share sometimes when we're out protesting around issues of justice. It also is helping me relieve my nerves because this is an intense conversation for me to have ongoing with this school board and in this district. I'm Melissa. I'm a mom. I'm a mom first of two awesome girls with Long Beach Unified, a graduate who has benefited from equity here in this district. She's at an HBCU and she's shining. And I have a high school student who is benefiting from equity and has, especially during the pandemic, when a white teacher took her under the wings over at, was it Hughes Middle School where she used to be, right? And did some amazing work there to really recognize and acknowledge Black kids and love on them and support them through a very hard racial uprising and pandemic. And she'd been doing it even before then. That's what community looks like. I moved to Long Beach to work with high school kids, if you don't know, to work around issues of leadership, communication, and looking at racism. That's how I came here. And we were supported by the school district on that and it has impacted lives. That's how I built most of my family. I actually met my kid's dad through that work and my kids are now doing that work with a local nonprofit organization. I'm proud to be an Equity Leadership Team member. And I believe that all of our kids deserve an amazing education here regardless of their race, their religion, their sexual orientation, their gender, their disability status. I joined this team because I believed in it and I know that equity is a value and it makes an impact. I want to talk about past, present, and future very quickly. We believed and we created this equity policy as parents and educators here working together because we wanted to see the policy discussed and promoted throughout the district, not just a little bit here and there, not just with the folks at the highest pay level. We need to see more. And we need you all to call on your schools and your administrators in particular to do that. We need parents to talk about it, families, students, to understand and know it exists and it's not just a piece of paper. Our Sankofa Parent Village is a great example of how we've been embracing equity in this district. They have been doing some learning sessions around the policy. We need to see more of that. In the past, there were, was a member, as Nubia mentioned, who didn't vote for this policy. He's not here. I don't know why he didn't. It concerns me. I also have heard a board member on that side ask questions like, but what about these other students? We specifically chose to call out Black and Indigenous and then people of color students because we know when our liberation is centered as Black people, other people will become free. When we can target those issues of Black students and students with disabilities, we're going to see amazing things for all those kids. And that needs to be understood. Oh, I see you are here. Who didn't vote. So for those two over there, please understand this is important to our community. This is what community looks like. There is an LA County annual report on hate crimes. They've gone up 45%. The most since September 11th. They're going to continue to go up. And folks are going to come after our Black student program and other equity programs. We need you two to fight for this policy, celebrate it, and champion it. Thank you.
Next, we have Maricela.
Good evening, board members, LBUSD students and staff. My name is Maricela de Rivera. I'm a resident of LBUSD's District One in North Long Beach. My eighth and fourth graders attend dual immersion schools in District Five. They don't attend dual immersion schools closer to home because there aren't any in North Long Beach. As you know, only one dual immersion middle school exists in Long Beach and it's difficult or impossible for many families in West Central and North Long Beach to attend. My daughters have received an excellent academic education as evidenced by the recent Cabe Seal of Excellence. Here's what that distinction and other accolades don't tell you. On both school campuses, there's rampant bullying and Black students are regularly subjected to blatant racism by peers and institutional racism by educators. At least the middle school has excellent administration, however. As LBUSD parent, I was appointed as an inaugural member of the Equity Leadership Team. We embarked on an often intense journey of crafting the Equity and Excellence Policy that was passed by the board on a 5-4 vote. I applied to be on the ELT because I have a deep belief in the notion that equality and fairness are misused terms that perpetuate institutional racism. It is only by ensuring equity at all levels of this school district that we can work towards our most structurally, that we can work towards serving our most structurally marginalized students and ensure they receive the education and positive social, emotional environment they deserve. To be clear, I'm talking about Black students. I am the very proud, loving mama of two light-skinned queer Latina neurodivergent girls. And it's okay for you to focus on Black students. It's not just okay. It's what we're asking for. My children are not harmed when we focus on the students who need to be focused on. It's deeply troubling to me, the conversations that I hear that my school board member and, I don't know, doesn't champion Jordan High School where my daughter can't wait to attend. Jordan is the only school, high school in District One, and it is an excellent school. Jordan is the only school, high school in District One, and it is an excellent school that deserves to be part of the conversation of positive things happening at this school, school district. I want to remind you that when your constituents, because they will, say this isn't fair, equity is not fair, and neither are the historical traumas that got us here, and neither are the structural racism that students experience every day that keep us here. It's not about fairness, it's about equity. All children deserve what mine get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth, please.
Before we move on to reports on superintendent advisory groups, I neglected to mention for our student representatives that you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, although we do understand, because it's a school night, if you need to go. So that's up to you. Now, we're going to move on to Item 16, Reports on Superintendent Advisory Groups, and we'll start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group with Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick update regarding two items. First is a reminder to my colleagues that we will get our first big chunk of policies for consideration in early January. So we're looking forward to continuing the work around our policy development. Second is, our district is also looking at ways that we can affirm our commitment to protecting our immigration policy, our current immigration resolutions and policies, but more importantly, our immigrant students and their families. So we'll be looking at ways that we can affirm our support of all of our students, in particular our immigrant students, and review any policies and recommendations regarding our immigrant students and families. That's my update.
Thank you. And next, we have the Instruction and Student Learning Supports.
No report tonight, but we will be reporting on what the district's doing with our gifted students.
Well, we look forward to hearing that one. Next, Workforce Development.
Yes, I have two things to report on today. I'll consider them, one, internal, and then maybe some external recruitment here. First, I'll talk about some of the external stuff. So for teachers and administrators, our annual Teacher and Administrator Recruitment Fair will be held on Wednesday, February 12th, just a couple of days after Super Bowl, if you were wondering, at Browning High School at 5:00 PM. And we'll focus on recruitment for our high school need areas, special education, dual immersion, career technical education, or CTE. And then in regards to internal, or I'd call it some of our professional development opportunities, one of the things that I've been very proud to hear about with my meetings with Dr. An is our discussions around our credentialing program. And so, right now, we have 80 potential participants interested in the LBUSD Preliminary Administrative Services Credentialing Program. For those that are curious, this program will help interested teachers receive their administrative credentials, and applications are available on our district website under the Equity Leadership and Talent Development component. And we'll close on Monday, January 27th. If you're curious, I know you are, that's just two weeks before the Super Bowl.
I wonder what's on your mind lately. Next, we will check in with our Student Outcome Focused Governance.
Yeah, and I talked to Eric. What's on his mind is Christmas. And it's ought to be obvious. So we had a good workshop a couple Saturdays ago about Student Outcome Focused Governance, and we are working on that, and we'll report further after the first of the year. We are working hard on our bylaws and making those bylaws consistent with the Student Outcome Focused Governance approach to things. That's my report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our Consent Calendar A, so we need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. On Item 17.7, if you can explain the contract for $75,000 with the University of Southern California on behalf of the School of Education to provide academic and college advising for high school students aspiring to attend Cal State Long Beach. So we're contracting with USC to prepare students for Long Beach State. Can someone just speak to that?
Sure, I can get us started. So we currently have, beyond this contract, we currently have a contract with USC to provide college advising to all of the students that are comprehensive and thematic high schools. This is above and beyond what our high school counselors, our district counselors, provide. It allows students to learn a little bit more about the application process, the process to apply for financial aid, really from the moment of learning about colleges to the application and then through financial aid. So this right here is actually a pilot that we're adding on to that grant. And actually, the funding right now says it's coming out of our district office, which it is. We also, though, are working with our College Promise partners and community partners to pay for some of this $75,000, but we wanted to bring this forward to get this working. What we're trying, what we're planning to do with this this year is, as you will probably imagine, when students graduate from us in June, May or June, they, we don't always, we're not always able to track what kind of success are they experiencing after that. They go on to college, they've applied, they go on to college, and hopefully, they are connected to the support system within the university. With our Long Beach College Promise students, high school seniors that graduate and apply for Cal State Long Beach, many of them apply, many of them are accepted, but not all of them accept that acceptance. Not all of them take on that admission. And so one of the things that we're curious about is what is preventing our students, who are accepted to Cal State Long Beach, from attending Cal State Long Beach? So these folks, starting in January, will be reaching out to the students who applied to Cal State Long Beach through the College Promise and doing some additional connection to see what is it, what can we do to support them in the actual acceptance of the admission through the financial aid, and then doing a handoff to the college counselors at Cal State Long Beach. So actually doing kind of meet-and-greet handoff to, whether it's through the EOP program and other programs that currently exist at Cal State Long Beach, but we want to make sure we do a more thoughtful handoff from that graduation in our system to the enrollment in their system. So it really is connected to ensuring students who are already accepted to Cal State Long Beach as part of the College Promise are accepting that, enrolling, completing the financial aid, and successful through that first semester.
Thank you. And also on Number 17, the contract with Pasadena Area Community College has a term of 7/1/24 to 6/30/25. Have services begun? Because this is back to July 1st. And if so, this is maybe the second time I'm going to ask if, in the future, if we can approve contracts before services begin?
Yes, this is an ongoing contract that we had previously with the institution to support our CTE programs.
Are there any other questions or comments about Consent Calendar A? In that case, I'll have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we are at Consent Calendar B, Approval of Finance Report B. We need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from Consent Calendar B, Item 18, as I have a potential conflict of interest under state law.
Thank you. Any further discussion under Consent Calendar B? I'll have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes four and one abstention.
Thank you. Now, we are at New Business, 19.1, Disclosure of the Proposals of the District to the Teachers Association of Long Beach for Initial Contract Negotiations. And this is an information-only item. Do we have any questions, or did somebody want to?
I do have questions. Article, if someone can explain Article 12, Evaluation Procedures, and it reads, "Modify Language to Align Criteria with the Recently Revised California Standards for Teaching, for Teaching Profession and Vision 2035 Inclusive of Data as an Evaluation Criteria." So that would be one of you can explain the, what that, the inclusive of data as an evaluation criteria means. And then also on Article 18, Terms of Agreement, it reads, "Explore a Language That Creates a Full Three-Year Contract Agreement or Limits Reopener Negotiations Topics to Article 6, Compensation During the Term of the Full Agreement."
First article that you mentioned, and that's in regards to the changes in the state. So periodically, our state will update the standards for teaching practice. In order to align our valuation tool and process with that, we needed to account for that. And also, part of that is asking us to look at our student progress data and how students are performing in the classroom. And so those are things we need to explore with our labor partners to work through that as part of the process.
The part of the Vision 2035 inclusive of data. So looking at data to evaluate teachers?
It's looking at progress data as we work with our teachers, but the other part of Vision 2035 is also looking at our adult portrait, and that alignment between that and the CSTPs to make sure that we're encompassing all that we have in Vision 2035.
And what about the, the looking at language that creates a full three-year contract agreement, limiting reopening negotiations?
It's basically something that the district will be looking at in terms of, instead of having three articles open each year in addition to compensation, we might be looking at a three-year agreement in totality outside of compensation. But outside of that, I really can't divulge much more because we haven't entered into the negotiation process yet with our partners.
Thank you. Did you have any further questions? No? And so basically, this is just the sunshining of what will be discussed, and that's why we're not discussing anything further.
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Benitez?
Steve, since you're up there, maybe you can walk us through. I think it'd be important for our communities, the process, like what part of the process this is, what comes next, what came before this, how we got here. I think it would be good to just, you know, reclarify for us where this fits within that process.
Sure. So whenever we go to, through contract negotiations, particularly when there's an opportunity for the expenditure of money, it's important that the public has an opportunity to view those proposals and have an opportunity to examine them prior to them being accepted by the Board of Education. So this is something we're required to do by law each time we go into negotiations. Now, the law really focuses on expenditure of money, but we're transparent in kind of outlining all of the articles that we're presenting during the process. And it's the same thing that Tal was doing, and so we work through that. And what's unique about this year is it's a full contract versus, which we refer to as a successor contract, just versus an intermittent one.
Thank you. That last part was what I was going to follow up on, Steve. And then we had Jerry comment on that part as well.
And that's why this year you see a lot more proposals on both sides because it's the full contract is open.
Thank you for that question. I like that. Okay, any further questions while we have Mr. Rockenbuck at the podium? In that case, thank you very much. And next, we have 19.2, Disclosure of the Proposals of the Teachers Association of Long Beach to the District for Initial Contract Negotiations. And I would imagine that that's the same part of the conversation that we just had. We are now at Report of Board Members, and I will just remind everyone that we had a meeting, a public meeting earlier today that started at 3:00 and went to about 4:45 on student outcome, student outcomes qualitative data. We had a couple of teams, one team from Hughes, another team from Holmes. And I recommend watching that if you get a chance, if you need an inspiration, if you want to see the type of teachers, administrators that truly care about our kids, that are doing wonderful things in their school communities, it's worth viewing. So that's what I recommend. But as far as the board reports, we will start with our student board member, Alana, with a report.
I don't have a report for tonight, but I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and enjoy your break for our students and teachers, and hope you get some rest, and we will see you soon.
Thank you, Alana. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I'll be brief. First off, I just wanted to thank our presenters from earlier today. I thought they were fantastic. I'm glad that we got an opportunity to visit the data, both quantitative and qualitative. I think that hearing some of the anecdotal components of what's working in our district are just as important as looking at some of the macro data that were often presented. The one thing that kept coming up in my conversation was Mr. Moskowitz, was how do we operationalize it? And I kept asking that question, mainly because I guess my pragmatic mind won't let me not think about it. In the same token, as I had a little bit of time to absorb the information that we received and watch those presentations and see the excitement in our presenters, I was quickly reminded of something. Is that part of that operationalizing it is the talent. It's absolutely having quality teachers in those classrooms. So the conversations that we're having today about opening up the contracts and holding on to these quality talent components to our district are really, really important. And so I was appreciative of Jerry's comments earlier, and I think that as we continue to look at the workforce development side of how the district operates, making sure that we recognize that in our recipe of success, it's because of the great tools that we have to work with.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Let's see if my asthma, let me get through this. President Craighead. So yeah, Mr. Miller, I'm always reminded of student outcomes change when adult behaviors change, right? So I'll echo Mr. Miller's and Ms. Craighead's comments on appreciation for everything that's happening at Holmes and Hughes. Also want to highlight for folks that have not had an opportunity to watch our conversation that Mr. Otto referenced from our Saturday board retreat where we worked on bylaws, as you said, Mr. Otto, and our student outcomes-focused governance. It's available for viewing. Mr. Itson, thank you for posting that. If you haven't had a chance, you know, encourage folks to check out and listen in. If any of you heard how we opened up this meeting, I was being facetious and not moving to approve the agenda, but I wanted to highlight and stress the importance of us as a board adopting procedures, policies, and bylaws that help us govern more effectively and advance on the commitment that we've made to prioritize Black students, to prioritize our most underserved students, and achieve our board goals and guardrails. And of course, that work is anchored in what we heard today in public comment, our Excellence and Equity Policy, as well as our Vision 2035 work. So I'll transition to, we had a convening yesterday, packed house at Browning, around our strategic plan and this vision that was co-created with our community stakeholders. So deep appreciation for everyone that attended and participated, but in particular, our three community members that testified during lunch and the conversations that occurred, not just not just because of what was shared, but to confirm and affirm our commitment around what our communities have prioritized, around student success, and the values that we want to uphold to what we heard today from our Holmes and Hughes teams, uphold and reflect that. What we, what's shared with us with the data, uphold and reflect that. And so just a big thank you to the folks that did show up. And I'm encouraged by those folks that show up. I'd love to see more of that. I'm eager to learn and hear about what came out of that convening and how we're, to use your word, Mr. Miller, operationalizing. The feedback that was provided, the content, the recommendations, we had some really cool questions from students there, asking for specific policies for our multilingual learners and supporting, you know, our disability, our students with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our Black students. So if you're interested, community members, more to come. And again, the encouragement here is to engage in every and any way possible with our district so that you can see for yourselves where your voices are landing in terms of our work. And then I'll echo Ms. Arroyo's sentiments about wishing everyone a very happy holiday break. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, I want to emphasize too, the all day, that were five hours anyway, at Browning yesterday, which was, I thought, a phenomenal experience because all the way through, what I was thinking was, you know, a couple of years ago, we talked about the importance of student voice and, and then I think through the strategic planning process, what we learned was how important it was to get as many voices as possible involved in the decision-making in the district. And that was a great example yesterday of that phenomenon. And I used to say, yeah, but then they graduate and we, we don't see them again. But I, I see the richness and how it's carried on and becomes a part of the way that we do business here in this district. And the students in particular were invited to, to not only participate, but to ask questions and to, you know, they got special attention at the end because it was really all about them and their role in the planning that we, that we do. And so I was very moved by, by how thorough the experience was and how inclusive it was. It's a word that's been used a lot today, and yet I think that we work hard at accomplishing that, and so I really, really appreciate that. It's been a long year. There's been a lot of things that have gone on. I think everybody has worked pretty hard to do good things for our students and in our district, and I personally am very grateful for all those efforts. I see them, I am in conversations and our meetings and things that happen not at our meetings, and I cherish the goodwill of everybody in this district. I too want to say happy holidays to everyone. It's, like I said, it's the end of the year, and yet it's been a good year and a hard-working year, and I'm looking forward to continuing to do this. So merry, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Dr. Velasco, Ms. Madison, and the principal at Lindbergh Middle School for the opportunity to visit the Female Leadership Academy class. It was a privilege to engage with such bright group of young minds. The students were great, and they were just very inspiring. So thank you for the warm welcome. And Danaeah, Alejandra, Genesis, Jaylene, Lizeth, Alana, Kashmir, Joseline, Amina, Kaylee, Ashley, Nila, Cindy, Frenzy, Kaylee, and Scarlett. You have the potential to be incredible leaders in the future. Believe in yourselves and know that you are capable of achieving amazing things. And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. I'm going to start my report with my visit to the Long Beach School for Adults Open House. I want to thank Nicole Lopez and her fabulous staff for highlighting, highlighting the great programs being offered. And one of the things that I came away with was how education is possible at any age. We are serving students at the Long Beach School of Adults anywhere from the age of nineteen to seventy-five. And I'll tell you, the students that are attending the School for Adults, they're not just choosing to be there, they're fighting to be there because they have so many obstacles, so many challenges, but the staff supports those students. And the, the impression I got is that the staff does not allow those students to opt out. They support them in any way possible so that they succeed, and those students of all ages are so appreciate, appreciative of that, they're so appreciative. So wonderful things happening, that was great. I had an opportunity to attend the winter concert at Los Cerritos, and I want to thank Valerie Vannard for the winter chorus program featuring fourth and fifth graders and a wonderfully diverse playlist. They sang songs that were culturally responsive, I'll just say, because that's kind of a buzzword from today. On Saturday, I attended the Kwanzaa Experience, and our Long Beach Unified School District, I don't know why I had to say that all out, but our students, they, they were featured. They sang the Black National Anthem. They did a presentation on the seven principles of Kwanzaa, and they did a fabulous job, very well-received. And then we had Doris Robinson, who's our math collaborative, I'll just say, director at Jordan. She was there with a group of students. And Mr. Otto, you mentioned, once they graduate from high school, that we don't see them again? Well, I'll tell you what, at this event on Saturday, Doris Robinson brought a group of students that, that have graduated, some as far back as 2015, and, and they came and spoke about not just being supported in their own personal success and graduating from high school when maybe they didn't think they were going to be able to do that, but being able to pay it forward, being able to volunteer in the community, and not, not just being a success for themselves, but for others as well. So fabulous event on Saturday. And then lastly, I want to talk about Patrick Henry. I want to say just last week, yeah, just last week. They had a Seal of Excellence presentation, and so they, Principal Vitetta and her staff presented qualitative as well as quantitative data and talked about all the programs and, not just academic programs, but the cultural events that they have. And there was a contingent from CABE that, that was there to vet Patrick Henry for the Seal of Excellence Award, I guess you would say. So there was a presentation, there was a tour of the school, we went in and out of classrooms, and then they had a panel with teachers, a panel with parents, and a panel with students. There were ten schools throughout the state of California that were up for this award, ten schools. And Patrick Henry was awarded the Seal of Excellence from CABE. So I just want to give Patrick Henry a round of applause, let's just do that right now. And I believe it's the first time one of our schools have received that award. So Seal of Excellence, first time, prestigious award. I know that we're all very proud of the work being done there. So that brings us to our superintendent's report.
Thank you. And actually, I'll start with the Seal of Excellence School, Patrick Henry Dual Immersion School. Officially, they will be awarded at the Spring Conference that the California Association of Bilingual Education holds, and so they will have a contingent there that gets to be awarded in person. Wonderful Seal of Excellence for the work that they have done. Also, the support of the community was highlighted, and just a wonderful tribute to dual immersion in our district. So super proud of them. I want to thank all of you for being at our Strategic Planning Quarterly Meeting yesterday. Really wonderful opportunity to be out of the boardroom, watching real work in action. So a very special day for us to experiment with new ideas, new ways of being with our community, and elevating the commitment of the core values that you approved in Vision 2035 around open district and the kind of collaboration that we are building with our community. Sometimes days like that feel like a risk to have a Board of Education observing, but what I can say is sometimes you have to take a risk to learn something new. The feedback has been resoundingly positive from our community. Appreciated the opportunity to have the lived experience shared by three of our community members who not only told their story, two of whom were former students, some more recently, or one more recently, one not so recently, but an experience that Sharon Diggs Jackson talked about being part of integration in our school system in Long Beach Unified, and then raising her four children. Cindy Soto speaking beautifully about what it is like to be a person with disabilities and what that means to a school community, and just helping us to envision different in our school district. And Brenda Soriano Villa, another of our students who also served on the Equity Leadership Team, speaking about multilingualism, its benefits, and speaking into us what is ours to do to improve things for our students. We also got to hear feedback and insight from the more than thirty community-based organizations, adults that sat at the table with us, as well as more than twenty students who could help us to not get insulated in the day-to-day work, but to pull back, reflect on that work, and hear their perspective about what it means to have an active strategic plan that sometimes needs adjustments and needs the community to bring voice to that. So thank you for making the time to be there with us at different parts of the day and to experience that alongside our staff. I also want to thank Jonah McGee, who last Saturday held, led, our first HBCU college fair that was held on the Browning campus. We had a former student speaking on a panel there who attended an HBCU along with three or four other former HBCU or HBCU grads, speaking about their experience to a room full of parents and students who could ask questions and really have student-to-student dialogue about what it means to go to an HBCU. And then booths all across the gymnasium that allowed for families to walk up and to ask questions of recruiters about scholarships and what kinds of programs were available, and just wonderful dialogue among our families and staff who were there. So the inaugural event was a success. And speaking of inaugural events, in January, we will hold our first winter employee celebration. This is at the direction of the board, as you think about how time is spent in this boardroom, works blurring and experimenting with other ways to acknowledge and honor. So on January twenty-eighth, we will be honoring staff who have submitted their names either for retirement through Human Resource Services, or have been acknowledged by outside organizations or received a district-wide award. We'll have doctoral candidates from different universities, our own program and others, featured as part of our first award ceremony, so hope that all of you will be there, and we'll have guests from, from families that will get to celebrate on that specific day.
Is Juan Benitez still singing the National Anthem that day?
I thought you were. Yeah, you, you all can do, you can do a skit, you can perform together. Lastly, I'll just echo the same sentiments on behalf of our entire senior team, you all have said it, but on behalf of us, just tremendous gratitude to our workforce. It has been a wonderful fall and a hard-working fall. In August, all, August and September, all of our employees participated in an experience around our strategic plan. It probably feels like a long time ago to them, but the buzz that I have heard about the adult portrait and what it means to, to live the core values in Long Beach Unified School District, to live them out, to be an adult that surrounds our students with what they need, to change a system that has a history of wonderful and a history of challenges, and to really think differently. We heard it today in the boardroom, what is possible when people come together around our students and aim for improving their own system in their classroom, improving themselves as an adult who surrounds students. And I know that when you think about that, the collective efficacy of an entire organization that comes together, everything is possible for our students. And so thank you on behalf of all of us that sit here with you. Thank you to every employee who has embraced our students and thought about their role in making education happen in this city. You are appreciated, and we wish you a restful, joyful winter recess. And let's also remember that we have people that are working hard during winter recess and appreciate them for the hard work behind the scenes that they will continue to do. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Yes, so happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, have a wonderful winter break, and if there are no objections, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here.